Welcome everybody after the tea break. We now have a special session on why legal awareness and legal literacy for girls is important for building back better. In this special session, Sri JVR Prasad Rao will be in conversation with Honorable Justice Madan B Lokur. I invite Mr Rao to you know take this session forward. JVR Prasad Rao is a former Health Secretary, Government of India and Director, General National AIDS Control Organization. He has made immense contributions in strengthening the health sector and in formulating India's response to HIV and AIDS. He is a strong regional voice for prioritizing public health in national policies in India and other Asian countries. Mr Rao was invited to join as a Regional Director of UN AIDS where he led the UN response to AIDS in Asia-Pacific countries. He has also held eminent positions in the UN as Special Envoy to the Secretary-General United Nations and as the Regional Director of UN AIDS for the Asia-Pacific region. He facilitated discussions on inclusion of AIDS elimination as a Sustainable Development Goal for 2030, which was finally adopted in the UNGA Declaration on SDGs in 2015. Mr Rao is also a former Commissioner-Secretary of a Global Commission on HIV and Law initiated by UNDP. Over to you sir, thank you.
Thank you Anushree, thank you very much for the introduction. Good afternoon distinguished participants in the Plan for Every Child Conference fellow board members. Mohammed Asif, Executive Director and his team in Plan India. I am here to moderate this session on legal awareness and legal literacy for girls and their importance in building back better for them. The session objective is to provide with detailed perspective on the importance of legal awareness and literacy for girls and young women in their socioeconomic development particularly when the country is in the process of coming out of this global COVID pandemic. Before I ask Justice Lokur to speak and before introducing him, I would like to just make a few introductory remarks to set the stage and to put everything in perspective. As we are all aware, the COVID-19 pandemic has created major disruptions for all sections of our country. But evidence shows that girls and young women have been disproportionately and severely affected. This happened in five or six important aspects of a girl's life. First of all, the education. Education for girls which had seen major improvements in the last decade, it has slowed down due to the closure of schools as a preventive measure. A survey undertaken by Rights to Education Forum in November 2020 found that about fifty-four percent of girls were uncertain about returning back to school post reopening. Fifty-four percent, almost half, more than half. It is also estimated that nearly ten million secondary school girls in India could drop out of school due to the pandemic, putting them at risk of early marriage, early pregnancy, poverty and domestic violence. The general maternal and child services have also slowed down due to the public health system getting stretched due to its focus on the COVID health services, COVID-related health services and vaccination. So this also had an adverse impact on general health and mental health and well-being of the girls and women. The third issue is at the family and community level, the existing challenge of gender-based violence. This has been aggravated due to the loss of livelihoods, lockdown and migration particularly in the urban poor families. According to the National Commission of Women data, India has recorded a 2.5 times increase in domestic violence between February and May 2020. This over three months, there has been a more than double increase in domestic violence. Some women's organizations also reported that in the first four phases of the lockdown, they received more reports of domestic violence than they had in the last ten years for a similar period of time. Next point is the pandemic-induced lockdown has also reversed decades of progress made in reducing child marriage and domestic violence. There is evidence of an increase in child marriages in COVID-affected areas. For example, in Telangana state, twenty-seven percent increase in child marriages have taken place in just one year, just in one year. Now, among other things, the economic stress also on large number of families due to the pandemic has impacted their food security and nutrition. Decreased income and reducing purchase power in the family has also led to them being unable to buy enough food for the family members in the family. Consequently, it is the girls and women who have there to bear the burden as it is them who often end up receiving less food compared to boys and men especially when there is not enough food available. So they are the ones who have to bear the brunt of that. So because of this, the situation as we know today is quite adverse for women and girls. And we have enough number of legislations available in the country to protect the rights of women and girls. I could list as many thirty to fourteen legislations which have been enacted in the last few decades. But the situation on the ground still remains not the same but needs a lot of improvement. At the global level, we all know that the Sustainable Development Goal Five, it seeks to achieve gender equality and empower all women and girls as a standalone goal for the governments and societal social development community also. It is with this social analysis of the impact created by the pandemic that we in the Plan India have decided to focus the Plan for Every Child 2021 Conference on the theme of Build Back Better for Girls. Since girls have been disproportionately affected by the pandemic, it is of enormous importance that children, girls and women are at the center of all the post-COVID rebuilding efforts. To get a more detailed picture of the legal environment and how it can be improved to protect the rights of women and girls, we have Justice Madan Lokur who of course knows, needs no introduction, he is immensely popular. But I would, for the sake of the information of some of the members, I would like to introduce him formally. Justice Lokur obtained his law degree from Faculty of Law Delhi University in 1977. He enrolled as an advocate on, in July 1977. He practiced in the Supreme Court of India and the Delhi High Court. He served as a judge at the Supreme Court of India from June 2012 to December 2018. And now he is the non-resident judge of the Supreme Court of Fiji. In fact, he is the only Indian to be appointed judge of the Supreme Court of another country. He also served as the Acting Chief Justice of the High Court of Delhi, Chief Justice of Gautayi High Court and Chief Justice of Andhra Pradesh High Court before being elevated to the Supreme Court. For those in the child rights sector, you must be knowing he is a man who spearheaded the visionary move of setting up the Juvenile Justice Commission in all high courts. And he also headed himself the Juvenile Justice Committee in the Supreme Court. His other areas of interest have been judicial reforms, computerization of courts, judicial education, legal aid and services and alternative dispute resolution. Justice Lokur is known for presiding over the social justice bench of the Supreme Court. His far-reaching verdicts on human rights particularly rights of children, women, marginalized sections of society and victims of state and extrajudicial violence are quite well-known. During his tenure as judge in the Supreme Court and earlier in the high courts, Justice Lokur always stood for upholding the rights of underprivileged. He is a great champion of protection of the rule of law in this country. Even after retirement, Justice Lokur continues to be a passionate advocate for the rights of women and girls. He is currently a member of the Board of Directors of Plan India. I would request Justice Madan Lokur to present his expert perspective drawing from his vast and diverse legal and judicial eminence on the significance and criticality of advancing legal awareness and literacy among girls and young women so that they are able to fight their way out of the pandemic, overcoming the challenges and disruptions that it has caused for millions. With these words, I would now hand over the floor to Justice Lokur to make his, to give his speech. Over to you sir.
Yeah, thank you Mr Prasad Rao. It's a pleasure to be here to address and discuss issues pertaining to the rights of women and children. You know, I would like to break up what I would like to say in three phases. One is the problems that women and children have faced. You have adverted to it in considerable detail but I would just like to add to it. The problems that women and children have faced during the last two years particularly because of the pandemic. The second part is, you know, what are the rights and entitlements that women and girls have? And the third really is, I think, very important because that is something that was mentioned by the young girls from Bihar, Kanchan, Rupa, Neha and Rithika. That yes, you know, we might know what our rights are but how do we implement them? So I think that is the third area that I would like to briefly cover also. Now, you see, we all know that we have to try and achieve the Sustainable Development Goals by 2030. And STG Five talks about achieving gender equality and empowerment of all women and girls. It's a wonderful idea, it's a wonderful goal. But unfortunately during the pandemic in the last two years, there has been a very major setback in trying to achieve this goal. Very briefly, you see, there are problems in education which you have mentioned. There have been a large number of dropouts. The pass percentage of girls has also gone down, the number of girls who are passing out from the classes has gone down. There have been instances of girls saying that, well, you know, they are not sure whether they are going to come back to school. Many of them have the feeling that, well, you know, if this sort of a situation continues, forget about coming back to school, we might have to get married. So child marriage is again a problem that has come about. With schools being closed, the personal human interaction that children have with each other, with their peers, sometimes with their teachers, you know, and in the playgrounds and so on, that has virtually come to a standstill and that is having an impact. Slowly but gradually, we are being told by health experts that it is having an impact on the emotional health of children particularly girls and also on the mental health of some of them. So education has really been a huge casualty because of the pandemic. The second area where there has been a very major problem is that of health. Now, we know that starting right from the time of, you know, conception virtually, there are problems in the sense that women have to go to doctors, to the gynecologist and so on. But with the lockdown, there were problems. When children are born, they require vaccinations, immunization and so on. Again, you know, that was not possible in many cases. And in fact, one of the reports has come to the effect that the number of patients who were suffering from TB or had a relapse has increased because they have not been able to get their medicines and go to a doctor and so on. So really, issues of maternal health have suffered. Issues of the rights of children for a healthy living have also suffered. These are two, you know, very major impacts of the pandemic. We also have some social impacts of general nature in the sense of gender-based violence. As Mr Prasad Rao mentioned, the violence, the domestic violence has increased considerably. Girls have found themselves more vulnerable to harassment of various kinds because of the pandemic. And of course, there is a social stigma attached to it which we somehow or the other have to get rid of. But that's another problem that, you know, girls and young women have faced about gender violence. Also, you have things like housework. Now, girls who have had to drop out of school, what have they been doing? You know, they've been put to do housework. So rather than getting education, they're being spent, their time is being spent in doing housework and you know, trying to help their mother doing the housework and so on. And then if you look at it from the power, from the point of view of empowerment, you know, is that, is that something good that is happening? Of course, children should help their parents in the family but if the time is going to be spent only doing this housework and so on, it hardly makes any sense at all. You have issues of nutrition, okay, that is also an area that is coming up. There have been instances where because of the economic consequences of the pandemic, there is less income in the family. The expenses have increased because of price increase and so on, the price of fuel has gone up. So as a part of saving, there has been a cutting down on food. And as a result of that cutting down on food, it is the girls who are suffering. There are reports of girls being given less food than boys. You know, so that's also an economic impact of what has happened because of the pandemic. So what I would like to say generally is that by and large, the impact of the pandemic in the last two years, coupled with the fact that, you know, things have improved but somewhat slowly, the pandemic has actually set us back. And we are now, you know, in a situation which is perhaps worse than what it was maybe about ten years ago when we had the movement towards trying to improve the life of girls and women. It's going to take us a long time to get back on the rails but we have to make that effort. So this is really what I would like to say about, you know, the consequences, the problems that have been faced by women and girls because of the pandemic on the social front, on the economic front, on the health front and on the education front as well. Now, if you look at it, you know, in this broad context, the second question that arises is that how are you going to give girls or women, young women, even older women for that matter, their rights? How, how, what, what, what are their rights first of all? And then secondly, how are you going to have those rights enforced or implemented? There are two things, you know, that we need to keep in mind. One is rights. There are some rights which are given to us by law. So you have, for example, the Maternity Benefit Act, just giving as an example. Mr Prasad Rao mentioned about thirteen, fourteen of these kind of laws. So you have something like the Maternity Benefit Act or the Dowry Prohibition Act. These are rights that have been given to women and girls by law. And then you also have entitlements which may not necessarily be flowing from a law that has been enacted by parliament or by the state legislature. But you have the entitlements that are coming through schemes. So you will have schemes for, you know, disabled children for example. Or you may have schemes for young girls, maybe a remission in fees, maybe free textbooks, maybe free uniforms. It depends on each state, what the state wants to offer by way of a scheme. Of course, you also have national schemes for girls and women. But there is this distinction between rights which are provided by law and entitlements which are provided through schemes and other incentives that the state government or the central government has to offer. Now broadly, what are the laws that are available? Now, the young girls, you know, spoke about laws pertaining to dowry for example. They spoke about laws pertaining to child marriages. Now, that's a matter of concern, you see, because like I said, during the pandemic, you had a large number of dropouts. So when you have a large number of dropouts, what do these girls do? They get into housework, that's one option, if one can call it an option. There are instances of child marriages. And a young girl fifteen, sixteen, you know, is sent off to some different family to adjust to a completely new life whereas she would have preferred to go to school which she was doing earlier. So it's a huge change and that is why, you know, there was this mention made by at least three of those four girls on issues pertaining to dowry and child marriages. So child marriages really is, again as mentioned by Mr Prasad Rao, there's been an increase, twenty-seven percent increase in Telangana. Now, that's a huge amount. And it's not only in Telangana but it's spread all across the country. So you have young girls, you know, being pushed into marriage. Why? Because, you know, they are not empowered or because of some economic necessity of the parents. And in this process of child marriages, there have been instances of child trafficking where the girl has actually been sold to the, you know, family for the purposes of marriage, for the purpose of marriage and money is being given to the parents of the girl. So this is really a problem that, you know, we have to deal with as a society. So one of the key elements I think that we need to keep in mind when we talk about the empowerment of girls and women is child marriages. It is illegal, it is not sanctioned at all. And in fact, the law says that not only is the person from both the sides who are guilty of, you know, committing an offense but those who have assisted in the marriage are also guilty of the offense. So you could have, you know, the priest or the pandit who performs the child marriage. He could, he's also guilty of, you know, making two young children get married. That is one aspect. Then you have issues of dowry. Now, dowry is also prohibited, there has been an amendment to the Act in 1986. But you know, the, 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 the problem of dowry is it takes various forms. So maybe at an initial stage, all right, some amount has been agreed as dowry that this is what the girl's parents will give to the boy. But then once the girl goes into the family after marriage, demands are made that, oh, you see, we had also asked for certain sort of thing but that was not given to us. Or, you know, we did not expect you to be like this, so therefore now, you know, we want some more dowry. So these demands go on increasing and there has been a huge number of, you know, dowry deaths that have taken place. There has been a huge amount of domestic violence that has taken place on the basis of demand for dowry. And it's not only, you know, the husband or the parents of the husband who are involved in this dowry demand. But then you will have the entire family getting involved. So there are instances, you know, where girls have been killed because of insufficient dowry. So you have that problem of child marriages followed by dowry. You could have instances of divorce, now how do you get a divorce? You see, and on what ground do you get a divorce? Can you get a divorce on the ground that, well, my dowry demand has been made? The law says that you can get a divorce if you are treated with cruelty, cruelty beyond a particular point. And really, who can judge whether the person has been treated cruelty except the victim of the cruelty? So divorce is also possible for girls who have to undergo this kind of, you know, torture in the matrimonial home when there is a demand for dowry or when there is a demand for domestic violence. Domestic violence is an offense. The girl has bodily integrity. She cannot be, you know, treated as somebody who can be beaten up. Why? Because she has not been able to cook the food properly. Why? Because she does not serve tea on time or she does not do certain household chores on time. So therefore, you know, the child is, or the girl is beaten up. Alcoholism has created a lot of problems in terms of domestic violence. So all these, you know, are eventually grounds for having a divorce. And rights are provided to girls and women through law to tell them that, well, if there is a particular event that occurs, it could be desertion. You go to your parents' house, don't come back, right? You are a stranger in this house, you know, you've not brought enough dowry or you're not doing the kind of work that we expected you to do. These are all grounds for divorce and coupled with domestic violence, when it can be agitated, it can be argued that the person is entitled to a divorce because of cruelty, because of desertion, it could be because of adultery. There are a variety of reasons on which divorce can be granted. Next you come to the stage of, you know, having a child. Now, one of the girls had mentioned, I think probably Neha had mentioned about the, this PCPNDT Act. It's a long act, pre-conception and prenatal diagnosis. The purpose of the act is to prevent female fetuside. There has been a lot of problem throughout the country where because of the new technology that has come in through ultrasound and so on, you can find out whether the unborn child or the child in the womb is a male or a female. And there are instances, many of them, where because the child or the unborn child is a female, well, the girl is forced into adoption, into, sorry, into abortion. Why? Because we don't want a girl child. And you know, that can also be a ground for domestic violence. Why can't you produce a male child? Why are you producing only a female child? You know, the girl has no control over it and she, she can't, you know, get up one day and say, all right, I'm going to have a male child and not a female child. It's, it's not within her control. But there are instances of this kind. And young brides are forced into abortions. So that's an offense. In fact, trying to find out whether, you know, the fetus is that of a male or the fetus is that of a female, male or a female, that by itself is an, is an offense and the law prohibits that. So really, it serves a larger purpose, the larger purpose being to prevent female fetuside. There's another law that you have, you know, which is there to empower girls to, you know, give them that feeling of gender equality that if I have a girl child, it doesn't matter whether I have a girl child or a main child, it doesn't matter. And you cannot force me to go in for an abortion just because I'm carrying the fetus of a girl child. Medical termination of pregnancy, yes, if the, you know, the mother is unwell and it is likely to have an impact, serious impact on her health, sometimes even death is caused. The term, the, the pregnancy can be terminated, there are good reasons for it. We talk about bodily integrity and so on, you have instances of rape. In fact, according to the National Crime Records Bureau, almost every twenty minutes, there is a rape in our country. And in many instances, the girl gets pregnant. What is she doing? What is she doing? She doesn't want the child of the rapist. She never wanted a child, but she has to carry the child of the rapist. Is she entitled to terminate her pregnancy? Well, I think the law is now beginning to become a little more liberal. And yes, in the case of rape and so on, the term, the, the pregnancy can be terminated. But there are limits. I mean, you can't go after, say, twenty-five, thirty weeks and say that, well, the pregnancy has to be terminated. I think the law should be liberal, but that, that's another issue. But many, many, many cases have gone to the courts to say that, well, the pregnancy may be terminated even though thirty weeks have gone by, maybe more than twenty-four weeks have gone by. So that's also a right that has been given to women. What about the workplace? After marriage, childbirth. I had mentioned about immunization, you know, the, the child needs to be immunized, child needs to be vaccinated. That's a matter of health, which every mother is entitled to, you know, protect the interests of the child. You have women who are going to work, young women, maybe who've just had children. What about, you know, their safety? What about a crash in the place where they are working? How many people, how many employers, how many multinationals, how many public sector undertakings have crashes? Where women can come and say that, alright, you know, I'm working over here. I don't have anybody in the house to look after my child. Child is two years old, three years old, four years old. I would like to put the child in a crash. How many of them have that? So this is again, a right which you have or an entitlement that you have in any case of being able to look after your child even at the workplace. And we do not provide that. Why is it? You could have instances of, you know, breastfeeding. Are there places that are made available to young women who've just had children and who want to breastfeed the child? Forget about a crash, you know, something like this, is there a space available? So these are things, you know, that we need to think about, which we need to educate people about, which we need to make people aware about. And in the earlier session, one of the speakers had said that you need to educate men about this, you need to sensitize men about this. Men don't realize that, well, you know, a crash is necessary. Men don't realize that privacy is necessary at the time of breastfeeding. So these are the areas that, you know, we need to make people aware of their rights and their entitlements. You have sexual harassment at the workplace. There are so many instances which are now coming out where the employer wants to harass, you know, a young working woman. You know, try to take advantage of the fact that he is senior to her or he's in a, you know, better position. What does a woman do in a situation like that? You can have sexual harassment even in schools. I mean, not only at the workplace, but you can have sexual harassment in schools. You can have sexual harassment in colleges. What are the provisions that have been made for that? What is the legal position? Women have their rights, they can make their complaint. One, of course, is going to the police and lodging an FIR and saying that I'm being sexually harassed. But there are internal committees in organizations. By law, they are entitled, they are, they are obliged to have committees. And there has to be an outsider so that the woman, if she has been, you know, sexually harassed, she can speak out and, you know, there would be an independent person over there so that she does not get victimized later on. So issues of sexual harassment happen not only at the workplace, although there is a law for it. It happens even in colleges. There are so many instances of girls being harassed in buses, girls being harassed in trains, metro, when they are going to college, girls being harassed in school buses. These are rights against sexual harassment. And girls and young women need to be made aware of it, that they have these rights and they can take action in case they become victims of this kind of sexual harassment. Indecent representation of women, that's also something very important. Where, on sometimes you find on the road, not very often fortunately, of indecent representation of women, posters, movies, in some pictures, you find that happening. Again, prohibited by law. And it can happen in a school, it can happen in a college, in, at the university level. But there is a right that is available to women. Women who are working are also entitled to equal wages as men. They're doing the same work. The Constitution of India says that there has to be equal pay for equal work. So if you are working as a steno, for example, why should you get less wage than a male steno? If you're working as an officer in the sales department or in the marketing department, why should you get less salary or less wages than your male counterpart? You're doing the same work. So equal regularation is extremely important. And there are instances of women being short-changed. Oh, because he's a man, he has a family to look after, so therefore I'm paying him ten thousand rupees. But because you are a woman, your husband is going to look after you. So therefore, instead of paying you ten thousand, I'll pay you eight thousand, or I'll pay you seven thousand. That's illegal. How does it matter whether the husband is also earning? There's no prohibition that a woman can get equal wages only if her husband is not working or he's unemployed. There is nothing like that. So equal pay for equal work is a constitutional requirement. You don't need something like the Equal Regulization Act or something for that. You have laborers, you know, poor people, young women who have to carry bricks on their head, on your coal mines, they have to carry coal on their head. They're being paid lesser wages than men. Why? Because they get tired early. Why? Because they're not able to carry as much weight as men. That's not, that's not equality. That's not equal wages for equal work. You have to pay women the same wages as you are paying to men regardless of where the work is. Whether it's in a coal mine, or whether it's in a brick kiln, or whether it's in a corporate office. Equal pay for equal work is a constitutional right. You have issues of property. What happens to a woman or a girl if her parents unfortunately pass away? Is she entitled to property? What happens if her husband passes away? What happens if compensation is awarded? You've had instances of so many people who get killed in road accidents. And compensation is granted to them. What happens? Where does it go? Does it go to the husband's parents? They say, oh, you know, we have dropped off the child, so therefore we are entitled to the compensation. Or does it go to the wife, the widow, as the natural legal heir of the deceased husband? There are instances where the parents of the boy have taken the compensation and told the girl, will you please go back now to your parents' house? Or get married to somebody else? Because your husband is dead. So these are issues, you know, where the rights of women are involved. Nobody wants, you know, these kind of misfortunes to happen. But we can't shut our eyes to the fact that they happen. You could have natural causes, you have landslides in the hills, you have floods in the plains. You have cyclones in the coastal areas. You have road accidents every day and everywhere in the country. What are the rights of women in respect of getting compensation? So this is an area that, you know, has to be carefully thought out, carefully explained. It's not only a question of death, but it could be a question of damage to property. If there's an earthquake and the house falls apart, what happens? Husband is alive, wife is alive. But yes, you know, they want to rebuild the house. What about the rights of a woman who has been divorced? Is she entitled to maintenance? And if so, what amount? What about the children's education? Are they going to live with the father? More often than not, the father says, well, you know, these children are your children, you look after them. So the mother is saddled with the children. What happens to the education of the children? What happens to upbringing of the children? What happens to the employment of the woman? Does she have to go around looking for employment and leave the children behind? Or if they are grown up, maybe send them to school? Who's going to pay for the fees? Is there no responsibility on the husband? So these are matters of, you know, economic importance. Property, I'm using the word property in, you know, a larger sense of money. You could have, you know, life insurance. These are things which women have to be made aware of, not only as legal rights, but also as entitlements. Child sexual abuse, rampant child sexual abuse. There are hundreds of cases that are pending against child sexual abuse. And most of the victims, most of the victims are girls. The law says that they are entitled to interim compensation. Cases, dozens of cases are pending for grant of interim compensation. Forget about final compensation. Legal services authorities are entitled, are obliged to determine the compensation. It is not being done. So you have, you know, young girls, adolescent girls, who are, you know, victims of sexual abuse, left to fend for themselves. There's a social stigma attached, there's a monetary problem. Compensation is not being given. Are they even aware of the fact that they're entitled to compensation? Perhaps not. So it is for us to educate them and it is for us to ensure that they are given their rights, they're given their entitlements in law. Speedy justice. You can't have cases of child sexual abuse pending for five years, six years, seven years. And the accused roaming around freely. The accused may feel that, yes, oh, he has done it once, he can do it again. And who are the persons who, you know, carry out these crimes? Again, the National Crime Records Bureau says that most of them. I don't have the percentage, but it's pretty close to ninety percent, if not more. Most of them are done by persons who are known to the girl. They are either neighbors, or they are friends, or they are relatives. Sometimes they are stepfathers, sometimes they are stepbrothers. So persons who know the girl are the ones who are actually doing this sexual abuse. And of young children, eight years old, six years old, seven years old. What are their legal rights? How are they going to explain to a court what has happened? Do they have any legal support? Today, there is a huge movement for providing support persons to victims of child sexual abuse. Because how do you expect a girl of six years old to explain to a court what has happened to her, how she has been raped? So this kind of awareness is necessary. You have bodies. You have the National Commission for Women, that was mentioned. You also have the National Commission for the Protection of Child Rights. You also have the State Commission for the Protection of Child Rights. What are they doing? Not in individual cases, but in larger policy matters, larger legal issues. What are they doing on their own to reduce domestic violence? To ensure that there is no dowry? To ensure that divorce litigation, for example, is made much simpler? To ensure policies with regard to variety of issues. Sexual harassment in colleges, sexual harassment in schools, sexual harassment at the workplace, indecent representation of women. There are so many of these issues. So you have bodies like the National Commission of Women, National Commission for the Protection of Child Rights, State Commission for the Protection of Child Rights. What are they doing on all these issues? It is therefore our duty also, apart from the duty of all these organizations, also to bring about the awareness within girls and women of their rights. You also have for older women, Senior Citizens Act, Maintenance of Senior Citizens. Old age homes. The law says that in every district, there has to be an old age home. It's not there. So an old woman is a liability on the family. Thrown out of the house, where is she going to go? There is no old age home. What about the children who are supposed to look after the parents under the maintenance of this Senior Citizens Act? Not being punished. And will punishment help? How will it help? As it is, the senior citizen of the woman is getting harassed and then you send her family, her son and daughter-in-law or her daughter and son-in-law to jail, how will that help? So we have to look at these rights, we have to understand these rights and ensure that we are able to give justice to women and girls. You have other areas, no arrest at night. Women cannot be arrested at night, they can't be asked to remain in a police station in criminal cases. They can file a virtual complaint, in fact, mandatory requirement of filing an FIR. The Supreme Court has said that you have to file an FIR, you have to register an FIR. It can now be done virtually through email. In sexual offenses, women are entitled to anonymity. You can't go around disclosing their name, address, picture and so on. Somebody like Nirbhaya, her name was not disclosed. There are so many of them whose names are not disclosed. Why? Because they're entitled to that anonymity. By law, you have today cybercrimes, stalking of girls, harassment of girls online, bullying of girls online, indecent pictures being morphed and circulated through WhatsApp. So one day, through WhatsApp, the picture of some girl morphed. Her face is there, but the body is of somebody else and it could be circulated to a jury. What do you do in a situation like that? How do you prevent this crime? What are the rights of the women or the girls in a situation like this of stalking? Of hacking into the, you know, personal account of girls and women. The law also provides for zero FIR to be filed so that you don't have problems of jurisdiction. Oh, this is not within my jurisdiction, it is in the jurisdiction of some other police station. The law doesn't permit that. File a zero FIR. Medical assistance. They say that, oh, you see, the girl was raped, but she filed the complaint after one day or after two days. What is she supposed to do? What is she supposed to do? I mean, if she gets raped, she's supposed to go to the police station? Or she's supposed to go to a doctor and get herself treated? So these are rights that girls have. I mean, you can't just say that, well, you know, because you've come to the police station ten hours after you, after the girl was raped, therefore there's no rape. And it's a story. That's not correct. The girls have to be made aware of, you know, this right that they have. You have support persons I had mentioned, there's a movement for support persons now. That they have to be given assistance, girls have to be given assistance. Child Friendly Court, Women Friendly Court. There's a movement for that. So you can't have, you know, a person who has raped a woman, or a person who has raped a girl, sitting across the table while the court proceedings are going on. Girl is, or the woman is bound to get traumatized. Seeing the person who has sexually harassed her or raped her, sitting just across the table. Again, there's no law for this, but it's an entitlement. An entitlement as a part of fair, equal treatment of justice. Shelter homes. Girls are found roaming around on the streets, abandoned, maybe by their family, or by the family of their matrimonial home, abandoned. Where do they go? They are picked up and, you know, they're entitled to be in a shelter home. It's not that every girl who's roaming around in the street, you know, is somebody who is up to some no good. Many of them are just abandoned, lost in a railway station, for example. Shelter homes have to be made ready for them, made available for them. They have to be given proper food, proper clothing, proper atmosphere, proper ambience in a shelter home. So you have these rights, you know, many of them. How do you enforce them? That is the problem. Now, implementation is absolutely necessary. Recently, the chairperson, executive chairperson of the National Legal Services Authority, Justice Lalit, had a program in which he said that the National Legal Services Authority has reached nine hundred million people in the country in one point nine million villages. Very large number, seven hundred million is more than half the population of India. But he added something very important. He said those rights need to be fructified and taken to their logical conclusion. So it is not only being aware of my rights, it is not only being aware of the benefits that I have under various schemes, but how do I implement them? How do I make sure that I get justice? You have the Legal Services Authorities Act. Every district in the country has a legal services committee. Every state has a legal services authority. For women and children, legal services, legal aid, legal advice is hundred percent free. But the number of people who are taking advantage of this is very low. The number of women and children who are going to legal services authorities is, I think, five percent or maybe even less. Why is that happening? So you have a remedy available, you have a forum where you can go for the enforcement of your rights, but people don't know about it. It is for us to educate them, it is for us to tell them that, listen, you can go to a legal services authority, whether it's in your district or whether it's in your state, point out the problem, and they are bound to give you assistance, and free, that is important. Free legal aid, again, is a constitutional right, and the law has made it clear that for women and children, it is free. It doesn't matter whether you have a high income, or whether you have a low income, or whether you have no income. It's free. You have courts where you can go to. Different types of courts, special courts you have for victims of POXO, for example. There is again, a requirement of bringing about these changes so that the courts become child-friendly. Where the accused and the victim are not, or the survivor are not sitting face to face across the table. Where the survivor or the victim is in a room and can watch the proceedings through video camera. These are areas where we can try to not only educate the people, make them aware of their rights, but ensure that they can bring their rights towards fruition. Implementation and enforcement of their rights. So you have mechanisms. I have mentioned to you about legal services authorities. You can go to them, they have panel lawyers, they will give it to you free of cost. You can come to organizations like Plan India. They can advise you, they have legal teams, persons who are well versed in law. So awareness of law or legal literacy should not stop at only knowing what the law is. Seven hundred million people know what the law is. That is what we have been told. Nalasa has educated seven hundred million people. But are these seven hundred million people aware of the fact that this is the way to get justice? Or where do we go when we want justice? That is what the learned judge in the Supreme Court emphasized. That you have to take the rights to their logical conclusion. So when we plan out, let us not only plan out by educating people and telling them legal literacy, oh, you know, you've got rights, you've got entitlements. The bigger question is, how do I enforce them? Society will need to appreciate that. That when those rights are there, if they are infringed, there are remedies available. And those remedies can come either through legal services, it can come through NGOs, there are large number of NGOs who are working on issues pertaining to child rights. Plan India is doing a wonderful job with that. They can help you, they can assist you. Take you to the legal services authorities, where you could free legal aid. So it is not as if, you know, something happens and the people feel that, oh, you see, as it is, we don't have enough money, we have too many expenses, or there's unemployment, or some other problem. And if we have to go to a larger complaint, we'll be in a bigger problem because we'll have to pay money to the lawyers. No, you don't. You don't have to pay any money at all. It is their obligation to do it for free. So the message that I want to convey to you is that awareness is good, it is necessary, it is imperative to know what are your rights, it is imperative to know what are your entitlements through schemes, welfare schemes, through the law. But it is equally, if not more important, to know how to enforce that right, or how to have that right, or that entitlement implemented. The government can come out with a scheme and say that, oh, you see, we will give you free textbooks. Well, the scheme is there, but if you don't get free textbooks, what is the use of that scheme? How is the child going to benefit? The girl child, how is she going to benefit? There has to be a remedy. That when this girl child has not got free textbooks, she's not got free uniform, what is the use of the scheme if I can't take advantage of it? You have schemes for improvement of, you know, facilities in schools. Pink toilets, as we call them. Are they there? If they're not there, why are they not there? How do you enforce the right of girls to ensure that pink toilets are available? So you have a scheme which says that, oh, you know, you must have a pink toilet. But what is the use of that scheme if there is no pink toilet? And what is the use of that scheme if that the scheme itself cannot be enforced? So let us look at it in that larger and broader context of legal literacy being a step in awareness, followed by the next step, that is implementation and enforcement of that rights. That's all that I have to say on the subject. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Justice Lopar. That has been great, enlightening and informative talk, and thank you very much. I think from the way the questions are coming up, I can see that you have stirred the hearts of many people here. And because you spoke on a, on an issue which is very relevant topically and which is very challenging, and I think we are all struggling to find answers to that. I have some questions which have been received from the audience. I will try to group them instead of just putting individually. I think basically, when you look at legal services, things have to happen at three different levels, as you said rightly. One is the laws themselves. I think this is where probably we have enough number of laws in this country. The parliament has been sensitive, I think they have been passing law after law. But many of them are lying there. So that is one part. Second is the legal literacy part. How, how many people are aware of their rights? Aware of the legal provisions? And how we can secure information to the people, especially to the poor and marginalized communities? I think that is one of the questions which is put. Okay, legal literacy is important. But how do we see that we can secure this to the most needy, the most poor and marginalized communities? So that, that is where I think the challenge lies. Third issue is the enforcement. We are talking about law on the books, but law on the streets, I think, is what is much more important, that is what touches the people. In fact, one of the Bihar girls was mentioning, yeah, she wants to go to the police and file a complaint, but she's, she's scared. Because the police themselves, which is the most important law enforcement missionary, themselves are illiterate, legally illiterate. They, they themselves do not know what are their legal provisions, and even if they know, they don't care. So this attitude, first of all, lack of knowledge, second is attitude of the law enforcement missionary, and also the lower ranks of judiciary, the magistrates and others. This is going to be a very big hurdle. And in fact, even in other programs I have seen, the real challenge lies here. How do we set that these sections of the, of the government, both in executive and judiciary, are sufficiently educated, empowered also, and see that certain amount of accountability is maintained at that level? Somebody fails, what is the type of punishment we can give them? So that is one part of the questions that I have got. Second is a specific question about juvenile, juveniles, rape by juveniles. This has been a very touchy issue since the, since the Nirbhaya case. Then the juvenile will go scot-free with a low punishment? Can we reduce the age of that particular, you know, the crime for which is punishable? That is one part. Second is the medical termination of pregnancy for rape victims. This is also a very important issue because if the, if the girl doesn't want to get the child, now I think this law and also the system should be friendly to her, to see that she can go, she can access those services sooner than later, and doesn't have to go through a trauma all the time, you know, till the time the, the, either the pregnancy, sort of either the delivery takes, or, you know, a pregnancy terminated at a later stage. I think that process itself is taking a long time. So this also brings to the last point, that is the delay. Justice delayed is justice denied, as we all know that. How can we see that speedy justice is given to crimes against women and girls? Can we, special courts is already answered that comes, but is there any other way that we can see that the justice process of justice can be expedited? So that the, they get the justice in the quickest possible time. So these are the three or four, I think, groups in which I can put the questions. Because we don't have enough time to go through each one of them individually, but maybe you can also deal with them together in a group. Over to you, sir. Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, sir. Yes, thank you, Mr. Krasalav. Yes, you are right. You see, the laws do exist, you know, and there are so many of them. There's so many schemes and so on. But knowing the law is not enough. You see, it's all right, I know that I'm entitled to equal wages. I know that I'm entitled to maternity leave. But so what if I know it? If I can't, if I can't enforce that law? If I can't tell my employer that, listen, I am entitled to maternity benefits, I'm entitled to maternity leave? If I can't enforce it, then, you know, there, there's a problem. And that is where I think we need to concentrate also, because even these young girls from Bihar, they seem to be aware of certain things. They seem to be aware of child marriages, they seem to be aware of, you know, problems that they face in education. PC, PNTT, POXO, they were aware of all this. It may be superficial, but they were aware. The question really is, how does one enforce these laws? I think that is one area where, you know, Plan India will need to concentrate and of course, take the assistance of society to ensure that the laws are implemented. There are two ways in which it can be done, you know, one is to ensure that the judiciary is aware and sensitized that crimes against women or the rights of women are not taken lightly. So you have judicial education institutes, academies all over the country. They need to be sensitized because they are the ones who are going to decide. And they are the ones who are going to make sure, make sure that there is no delay when you're dealing with crime against women. So I think one of the areas that we need to look at is educating judges, I mean, educating within inverted commas. Judges on the rights of women and children. To explain to them the socioeconomic impact of delays that it can have on the life of women and children. You have prosecutions, the police, you have police academies in every state. You have a national police academy, wonderful national police academy in Hyderabad. In states, you have police academies. They can be sensitized on the rights of girls and women. You have to register an FIR. You can't arrest somebody at night and keep them in the police lockup. So really, that effort has to go in that direction. You know, so you have to couple, you, you have to, you know, mix the awareness with the enforcement aspect. You have certain peculiar situations which, you know, you had adverted to, namely of juveniles committing serious crimes. Rape or murder, for example. And getting away with it with the low punishment, three years. Three years is the maximum punishment. Now, you see, the law has been amended and it now says that a child between sixteen and eighteen can be tried in an adult court if that child is aware of what he has done and what are the consequences of his act. And if the child is sent to an adult court, then the child is treated like an adult and tried accordingly. So therefore, if it's a case of murder, the child will get life sentence. If it's a case of rape, he will get the sentence that is to be awarded, ten years, it could be gang rape, life, and so on and so forth. There is a difficulty in this, and there is, I mean, I tell you that there is a study that is being conducted by NIMHANS in Bangalore, National Institute of Mental Health and Sciences, Neurosciences. How do you actually find out if a child of the age of sixteen or seventeen below the age of eighteen is aware of what he is doing? And what are the consequences of his act? How does the judge of the Juvenile Justice Board, which is the first court which is going to look into this, how do they make the assessment? going to look into this, how do they make the assessment that the child is, you know, capable of understanding what he has done? That's a problem which, you know, deals with neuroscience. Members of the juvenile justice board are not experts in neuroscience. They can take the help of experts, but they say, no, no, no. You see, we know that this fellow, he's appeared before us, he looks to be smart enough to know what he has done, and if he has committed rape or if he has committed murder, how can you say he doesn't know anything? By and large, they're right. But neuroscience, it has been found out now, the brain keeps developing till the age of about twenty-four. So, there are things which a person of sixteen or seventeen will do, or a person of even twenty-one or twenty-two will do, but a person of forty years or forty-five years or fifty years will not do. So, this is a, it is a science that is developing. I know there is a lot of, you know, social, uh, feeling that you can't have, you know, persons get away with this kind of thing. But there is now an expert body, NIMHANS, which is actually doing research on this. And they've had discussions with judges from across the country to find out how do they decide whether the person should be treated, treated as an adult or should not be treated as an adult? That is one aspect. The second, which you had mentioned, you know, about, uh, girls getting pregnant by rape, my personal view is that, you know, they, it's, it's a matter of bodily integrity. And if the child does not want to carry, uh, the fetus, the child is, the, the victim is entitled to say that, listen, I, I need to abort. I had to deal with a case where a girl of thirteen years of age, she was raped by her uncle, her father's brother, and probably her parents knew about it, but because it was the father's brother, you know, they started making all kinds of stories. And this girl didn't know she was pregnant, she was thirteen, and twenty-four, twenty-five weeks later, when she used to go to, you know, a doctor, to a gynecologist, and then she was told that, listen, she is carrying a child, and then she realized the consequences of it. And the law said, oh, you see, you could have terminated the pregnancy only before twenty weeks, now twenty-four weeks or twenty-five weeks have gone, what is to be done? She did not want the child. But the situation became such that by the time, you know, she went to the high court, by the time she came to the, to the Supreme Court, more than thirty weeks or something had passed, and, you know, she had to have the child because it became dangerous for her life to try and abort. So, you have cases like this, and by and large, I think, it's not only a legal issue, but it is a social issue. And we need to discuss it in society, we need to find out remedies, and legal awareness is of course one aspect of it. And I'm not saying it is not an aspect of it, it is an aspect of it. But the law is to serve society. How best can it serve society? That is what we need to discuss when we talk about, you know, children committing rape and murder, when we talk about, you know, teenage pregnancy. You have, you know, girls who, uh, young girls, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, they run away with some boy, and there are cases filed against both the boy and the girl on the ground that, you know, it's a case of kidnapping. Why? Because the parents disapprove of it. But it is not. I mean, they went by consent, the girl went by consent. So, you have so many cases like this, you know, the, in courts, they are called, you know, love cases, where young people fall in love and they decide to elope because there is a problem within the family. But that's not a crime, you know. So, these are areas which directly affect, uh, children, girls, young boys also, directly affects them. So, it's, it's not only a question of law, but it's also a question of how society looks at some of these issues. And that is a part of the, you know, education or the awareness that we have to bring about.
Yes. I think the, the awareness at the societal level, uh, I think, is the most crucial part. But then how do we bring that? That is the main issue. Uh, one aspect, of course, is the government visionary, the law enforcement visionary and the judiciary, et cetera. Second, the civil society itself, being more aware and becoming more sensitive about these rights of girls, and then, you know, putting pressure on the law enforcement authorities to perform and to do their duties. And that's where I think organizations like Plan India have a great role to play. What, what do you think the, in future, Plan India should do, or organizations like Plan India should do, to see that this, not just to spread the awareness, but also to create that empowerment among these girls to go and fight for their rights? And also to challenge the law enforcement authorities to see that, look, you are not doing your duty, you better come and, uh, see, help them, you know, that sort of thing. So, what, what exactly the, uh, civil society organizations like Plan India can do, or what role they can play in these issues?
Yes, I think, you know, organizations like Plan India, I mean, Plan India is doing a lot, there is no doubt about it, you know, they've been at it for a very long time. Uh, so they have the expertise, they have the experience, but they need to be, uh, organizations need to be more proactive in the sense of reaching out to people who are impacted. Like these girls that we saw in the morning today, they have some sort of a club, right? Legal literacy club or whatever the name they give to that club, but they have these clubs. They want to know, you know, it is not that they don't want to know, they want to know what are their rights. That is a step in empowerment, that I must know what are my rights, and having known what are my rights, how do I enforce them? So, there is this need that these girls have expressed, and I'm sure many other girls have also expressed from time to time, that they want to know what is the law, they want to know what are their rights. We have to reach out to them. We have to approach these clubs, we have to approach schools, we have to approach colleges. We have to try and get, you know, champions, as we call them, or change makers, who can spend time trying to understand this and, you know, spread awareness amongst, uh, the people who need the assistance. When the National Legal Services Authority says that they have got, they have made seven hundred billion people aware of, uh, what their legal rights are, it has been done through something called paralegal volunteers. So, you have paralegal volunteers who are recruited by the National Legal Services Authority. They are given some kind of training and then they are told that, all right, now you go and, uh, you know, spread the message wherever you are. So, NGOs and with Plan India taking the lead, they can have something like this paralegal volunteers, you know, have a sort of a curriculum, have a sort of a course, you know, maybe fifteen days, which explains the rights, which explains the manner of implementation, which explains the, you know, implementation strategies. Have a refresher course, you know, after all, when these people are, you know, made aware of the rights, these so-called paralegal volunteers or change makers or champions, when they go out into the field, they will learn something. They will tell you that these are the difficulties that we are being faced with, you know. There is no access to legal literature. Maybe pamphlets can be prepared, giving them information. Maybe small booklets can be prepared on different topics, on, uh, medical termination of pregnancy or domestic violence or dowry or something like that, small booklets, which can then be disseminated and distributed. So, really, it has to be a movement that Plan India will have to prepare for, to reach out to young women, to give them that training through a course, which could be fifteen days, twenty days, depending on what the experts say, followed up by a refresher course. There will necessarily be corrections, but it has to be done. You know, we can't say that, let's wait for some ideal situation to arise, that ideal situation may never arise. So, I think those proactive steps have to be taken, you know, and somebody has to guide them into taking those proactive steps, into formulating curriculum, into being able to reach out to people. Communication strategy is important, field visits are important. All these steps, I think, Plan India will need to organize and take.
Thank you. Uh, my last question, of course, this is relating to our leadership. I mean, this is like the elephant in the room. You know, the parliamentarians at the government of India, at the central level and state level, they think that their job is to enact the law, and once they enact the law, it becomes an act, then their duty is over. But they are also political leaders. They have constituencies from which they are elected. Now, if they, they enact a law, in the same constituency, if these sort of crimes are perpetrated, don't you have an accountability for the, for, for this thing? Their job doesn't end with just passing the law, but how is it that we can ask them also to go back to their constituencies and also educate the people? In fact, this should become a political message, then it goes much more effectively into the people we have seen in number of programs. If the political message comes, then people also respond, and the law enforcement visionary also responds better. How can we make our legislators and our parliamentarians, like the, how can we put them in the vanguard of this movement in legal reforms? Not just enacting the law and putting them in a shell, but taking them to the people and getting them enforced and implemented?
Yeah. Yes, I think, you know, uh, we will have to start from, uh, you know, the bottom and go up to the top, uh, in that sense. Panchayats, for example, you know, uh, if we can talk to the leaders in the panchayats, you need to educate a few of them because most people in the rural areas will believe what the, you know, member of the panchayat is, right? So, if you have this vaccination for COVID, for example, if the panchayat leader says that, yes, it is a good idea to get vaccinated, people will get vaccinated. If he says, no, 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 it's not good at all, nobody will come. So, also with, you know, legal literacy, with the rights of girls, with the rights of, uh, women, I mean, these panchayat leaders will definitely hundred percent be coming into contact with young girls and with the young women in their villages. We, if we are in a position to educate them, we're in a position to sensitize them, that women also have rights. Don't expect them to only sit in the house and, you know, cook the food and give you tea whenever you want, that, that's not the role of a woman. You know, they need to go out, they need to work, they need to get educated. They are, they are fifty percent of our society, and we can't say that, well, fifty percent of our society, let's, you know, leave them aside and see what we can do. So, I think if you start at the bottom, start with the panchayat, start with the local MLA, and the local MLAs can then influence their local MPs. You know, getting time from, uh, a member of parliament is not easy because they've got so many things to do, right? Uh, they have hundreds of thousands of constituents whose, you know, welfare they have to look after. So, this is just one of the issues that will be before them, so reaching out to them is not going to be so simple. But at the same time, reaching out to the people at the grassroots, at the panchayat level and then at the MLA level, uh, is much easier. So, I think let's start at the bottom and then go up to the top. That, that would, I think, be a strategy, but then the communication experts, you know, will be able to tell us, uh, which is the right way to go about it. Okay, I think we seem to have lost his connection. Anushri, are you there?
We can't hear you.
Yeah. I, is it audible now, sir?
Yes, yes.
Yes. It seems like Prasad Raoji's network connection has dropped off. So, uh, so just to continue with the conversation, uh, and since we are reaching towards the end, we'll wait for Prasad Raoji to, uh, join us, Anushri is following up.
Sorry, uh, my connection went off momentarily.
Yeah, okay. He's already there.
Sorry.
Okay, okay.
The power suddenly went off.
Please.
So, thanks a lot. I think that was a great, uh, scintillating, um, talk by you, Professor and Dr. Emin, Justice Lokur. And, uh, I think you have touched upon most of the important aspects, starting from the legislation, the law on the books, and then the enforcement, the awareness part, and what role civil society can play, what role the enforcement authorities can play. I think the entire aspect of legal literacy issues have come up in the debate. I wish we had more time, but I think, um, at some stage we have to sort of, um, we shouldn't stand in the way of lunch for the participants who are there. But thank you very much for taking time and then, um, educating us about the important issue of legal literacy, et cetera. And as a plan member, we would really look to you also for guiding us in future about how Plan can play a very constructive and informative role in this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you.
And or to you, Justice Asif.
Yeah, thank you, sir. And also, uh, thank you to you, uh, Prasad Raoji. I know you have, you had many other commitments, but you, uh, decided to moderate this session for us, and you did it so well by, uh, firstly by putting the context in which we look at the larger issue of women's rights, girls' rights, especially in the COVID times, and how legal literacy and awareness can play a role. So, thank you, Prasad Raoji, for your time, and, uh, no, thank you. Uh, and all the issues that we have raised, we have noted it, and in the concluding sessions of the, the conference, we will be taking it up, sir, just to assure you that we will convert all the points into plans of action, which we will then follow through during the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.